Like to make.
Jeff Smith, I'm with Sparta Lights, also on the board of Allegheny Community Television. We've got a new little project that we started. There's a group here in the community. We've been talking about it probably for a year and finally got the courage up and found enough people to maybe be able to put something together.
Thank you.
John passes out, but for the lack of a better name, it's the Allegheny Coffee Club. And back before there was newspapers, England, Germany, France, the old country, people would get together a day a week, once a month or whatever, and talk about the news and current events in their neighborhood. Just like every small town, we're no exception. It's fascinating that you can have a riot in Portland, Oregon at 3:00 in the morning, and by 6:00 on Eastern Standard Time, you've heard about it. We could have the same thing happen in Glade Valley and it'd be a week before it makes it back to Sparta. The time it goes through the cycle in the rumor mill, a week later, we find out it was three cows and somebody roughed up the fence and they're standing out in a row. So what we're trying to do is pick community topics that everybody has an interest in. We're going to meet once a month. Eventually, I hope that we get the kinks worked out of this thing so we can air it on TV. But what we're trying to do is, as I have in this handout, we'll have two commissioners that are going to talk about the quarter cent sales tax and the fire tax. Mr. Irwin is going to be there, Mr. Osburn, it'll be at Veterans Park, 7:00 on August the 13th, and that's the only thing that we'll talk about. Nobody would take it, so I'm the moderator, trying to keep everybody's feet in line. But we're going to talk about those two scenarios, how they affect the county, and then we'll have a question and answer period afterwards. Hopefully, we can put this together and do it every month. Like I say, this winter, we hope to have it on TV. We don't know what the topics will be. If you attend that meeting, what's going to happen after the question-answer period is we'll take a vote of the people that's there, of what they want to hear the next month, and then we'll try to line up somebody to speak on that subject. I'm sure economic development's a hot issue. That may be something somebody wants to hear. I've had two requests from some people already that want to talk to DOT about the bypass in 18. So we'll try to line somebody up, have a discussion. We'll have water, coffee, honey buns. As a dessert, if you want anything else to drink, bring your own, but it's Veterans Park, 7:00, August the 13th, and eventually, we hope to get this on TV. Appreciate it.
Good meeting, Jeff.
What?
Where?
Veterans Park, 7:00, August 13th. If we can get 20 people, 25 people to attend our first one, I think that'll give us something to move off of. But people are curious about information. It's just like the fire tax. I got approached by somebody complaining about their tax bill was going to go up about the fire tax. Well, you didn't have an increase this year. So we've got to explain ourselves a little bit better. Quarter cent sales tax coming up, it's already been defeated, I think, twice. I'll be, you mentioned a figure maybe last meeting or two meetings ago about what we're losing on quarter cent sales tax, 200,000 or something. That's what people need to know. Every county's passed it but us. The pros and the cons, we don't have a side. We're just trying to get information out, let people ask questions. Maybe that'll get back to the community and help everybody to make a decision. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Anybody else? Karen, do you want to look up and what time you need to apply to Ap Health?
Good evening, gentlemen. Thanks for all having me back. Everybody's doing all right. I've been asked to come in and give you an update with respect to the COVID-19 pandemic. I've got a few talking points, and I'll make myself available for any specific questions. If you have a question, feel free to interrupt me at any time. So, as you know, we continue to hold by weekly community meetings with our Allegheny stakeholders. I believe we have one tomorrow at 10:00. And provide weekly situational updates. If anybody here or in the community would like to be included on those lists, just reach out to us at Ap Health, and we'll be happy to share the information we have. So since mid-July, we've been seeing some rather concerning trends in the number of cases that were seen of COVID-19 in Allegheny County. It has been continually rising with this past weekend getting a rather large jump. We, the largest group that make up this population is our 25 to 49-year-olds. And so you may hear on the news about these super spreaders or people that are out and about. They're asymptomatic. They don't know that they're sick. They don't feel sick, have no reason to think they are yet. They can easily transmit it. And so we are seeing an alarming increase. Do have an outbreak associated with Bottomly Evergreens, and we have started working with them hand in hand. They have reached out to us and actually had us do some testing of their farm workers. And we do have about 102 out of the 400 that we tested last week that are positive. But they are working with us and actively seeking our help, and we are working with them. So I do want to say hats off to that community partner for being involved, asking us to come in, to help them out, and now to work with them to get through this. And they are taking a lot of good steps to hopefully we can limit this and definitely try to keep community spread from happening. So now, we're up to 165 cases, with 112 of those being active. People have the virus, and we are having them quarantined away from the rest of the community. So in addition, because of the farm workers, we are working with Department of Health in Virginia and also North Carolina DHHS to make sure that we stay on top of this and limit any potential other spread. Obviously, it's very important in all our communities that we continue with the three Ws. Wearing a mask is scientific. It shows it can reduce the amount of droplets that we share with each other, and that is how this virus primarily spreads. Close contact, washing our hands, and then staying apart, which is kind of hard to do. I've not seen my mom, well, I've not hugged my mom since March, and I'm getting a little antsy like a lot of people are. But these are the things that, this is what it's going to take to stop this infection from spreading until we can come up with a vaccine. Hopefully, that sooner than later, but until then, you know, we want everybody in the community to do their part and practice these three Ws. We are, we have been offering free testing at the Allegheny Clinic every Monday through Friday by appointment. It's free. All you have to do is call and make an appointment, come by, get you in, get you out. We've also had a couple of other community testings in Watauga and Ash that were very successful. We're trying to line one of those up here in Allegheny. That's also free to the public. As we get that set up, we will be getting that information out. One very important part about our community testing, I know in the news, we've heard a lot about this seven to 10 days to get results back. And here in North Carolina, that's been about seven to eight days. We've been partnered with a company, Mako, out of Raleigh area, and they're a private company, and they've been turning around these community testing events for us in about two to three days at the most. So we're grateful to have that relationship with them. They came into Ash County this past Saturday, tested over about 370 people, and we expect to get the confirmed results back here anytime now. So as we get that set up for Allegheny, and we will get that information out through you, through our other community partners, and anything you can do to get our neighbors up here and get that test will help us find where this virus is through contact tracing and then get these people to stay apart and try to break that chain of spread. There's a lot going on there. We have added quite a few staff. We have recently added four new case investigators. Their job is specifically to contact trace. When we get a confirmed positive, we reach out to that person, and then we keep up with them. Not only to make sure that their health, you know, if their health is going to deteriorate, we want to know that so we can get them, you know, to an emergency room, but also monitor, do they need anything? Because some people don't have extended families that can bring them food and other necessities. So we keep up with them to make sure they're doing well. I guess in a nutshell, that's what I had prepared. Yes, sir.
Appreciate what you all do. You all on the front line, you pretty vulnerable out there right now. Is masks a voluntary or recommended? We talked to Bottomly about requiring their workers when they go to grocery stores. I know they couldn't work with them on. It sure would help because it's very noticeable when, you know, a couple vans pull up and there's, you know, 30 or 40 people get out. Nobody's wearing a mask. That's pretty threatening to the community, so.
It can be. The governor's executive order is pretty clear, you know. We all should be wearing masks when we're out in public. And even Dr. Burks at the federal level last night said, if you live in a multi-generational home, meaning you've got grandkids to the grandparents, you should be doing it there. So we all should be wearing it. And the Bottomleys are, you know, they're aware of this. They work, you know, with their workers to get this literature out, to enforce that with them. And they, you know, they are getting supplies of these masks from the Department of Labor and also Emergency Management. So, you know, that is something we all need to be doing.
You said that they were cooperating. How come two vans came into food line and they were in food line yesterday without masks? And if you question that, my wife is back there. She was in the building whenever this happened.
I cannot speak for each individual worker that they have. I can tell you that we have had several meetings with Bottomly Farms. We had one today at 2:00. They had just recently hired their own nurse, who is now on the scene for their workers. They were very forthcoming on today's meeting with the steps that they are taking. Obviously, if there are shortcomings, then we need to try to work with them to address that. And I will say again, it's not just the migrant workers. It's each and every one of us need to be practicing these three Ws at all times.
Are you aware of that possible contamination from yesterday?
As far as specifically workers yesterday?
Yes.
Oh, no, sir. I don't.
They want to look into it.
Well, we will continue to work with them and to remind them, as we do all of our community partners and all of our community members, that this is important.
Think you said you had, out of the roughly 400, you tested 102 were positive?
This time, yes.
Are they confined to a certain area? Where are these people right now?
So what Bottomleys have told us is that they are isolating them in their facilities. They, of course, have the large facility here in town. They also have a number of facilities in Virginia, right across the state line, and several other migrant housing facilities throughout the county. And they have assured us that those people are being isolated. I just dropped off 200 thermometers to their nurse not more than an hour ago, and she was in the midst of getting supplies, food, toilet paper, all these things lined up so they could get them out to the workers that have been separated.
Who actively checks on these 102 people to see that they're basically in self-quarantine? Does somebody every day either physically visit them or phone them?
So what our current protocol is, and please keep in mind, you know, three counties, we have about 100 staff. We've added four contact tracers. When we have an active case, our staff call out to each of the active cases and check on them. We are, this just, you know, really came to light on Sunday when we had a large number come back positive. And so we've been gearing up for that. So we are working with Bottomly Evergreens to get, you know, all the workers segregated and isolated and then get to our contact tracers. I think we have maybe four bilingual staff, and a lot of these workers do not speak English. So we are doing everything we can to get the information, who it is and where they are. We want to know where they've been living, what vans they've been riding. And Bottomleys has all this information, and they've been working with us so that we can try, as you said, get them separated, know who they are, and get in contact with them regularly to make sure that they're not working, that their symptoms are not getting worse, that they don't need more medical attention, and that if they are getting better, you know, then we can look at trying to get them back into the workforce.
All of up on that, you tested 400.
398.
Yeah, you know, close to four. 102 tested positive. Your test was on Thursday or Friday, I believe.
It was Thursday.
Now, those 300 that tested negative, will you go back and test them again to see if these 102 infected them Friday, Saturday, or Sunday?
Certainly. That's a good question. And yes, we have already started talking with the Bottomleys about doing more testing, working through the logistics of trying to, you know, are we going to go back out there? Are they going to come to us? But yes, we are talking with them about that. As you know, you could test negative right now, and then tomorrow morning. So, you know, that's why this is so important, that we follow these three Ws, because you just don't know if you've got it and when the symptoms will onset.
Thank you. Any questions?
One more question, if I may, Mr. Chairman. You said you didn't get notification until Sunday?
Well, so we had, I believe, maybe four workers that we had tested or were told that were tested. And then, so we worked with the Bottomleys to do this mass testing. Sunday is when we got a large number of results back.
So it's possible that they could have been transporting before they were even aware of these positives.
Completely.
So my questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Blaisen, we certainly appreciate you coming on short notice.
Sir, anytime.
Thank you for everything you're doing.
Works out. I'm on, it's on the way home, so.
We certainly appreciate what you folks are doing.
Appreciate your support. And anything that you ever need from us, you know how to find us. Have a good evening, Jeff.
Karen, do you have anything you want to add to the county perspective from the extension service and masks and precautions?
Karen, I just wanted to touch base. I know I'd spoken with Bill earlier in regards to face masks and those types of things, but, you know, we delivered 4,000 more masks to Bottomleys today. That's one of the biggest things, is making sure, as far as all farmers that we're working with and farm workers, providing those masks and additional sanitizer and those types of things that we're sending out. So, you know, the biggest thing is, is in any type of setting where you have multiple people gathering, follow those, not only being outside working on farms but inside. I know, which is what he had said, but we're continually, any producer or farmer that has a request for those supplies needs to contact our office, and we're distributing them on a regular basis. So that's pretty much it, but.
Sounds good. So all the farmers know where to direct their traffic, your phone.
Yes, that's for sure, so.
All right.
Thanks again.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, we'll move on. General business, first up, special use permit. Diamond Communications.
Evening, Commissioners.
Evening.
I'm in your packet, and it's a letter I sent in today. And for your review consideration is an application for our construction and operation of a wireless tower facility. The owner and Diamond Communications request approval for the tower to be located near the intersection of Mountain View Road and 21. The tower is a 195-foot monopole, and it'll be located on the parcel when there's a number. The application has already received a conditional use permit by the county planning board and approval from them. And then I've completed a review of the application and plans, and it does meet the standards of our ordinance and codes.
Bobby? Just one question. Has the public had a chance to talk to the planning board about this, or is there a public comment period?
At our, the planning board's meeting, we newspaper 10 days notice. We do have to legally notify people that are adjacent property owners, but the planning board and where our ordinance reads, we notify anybody within 2,000 feet of it. And I'll receive letters, and I put a sign at the parcel itself. And that was done. Then we had a public hearing with the planning board at our July meeting.
This one's sort of in an isolated area. There's nothing around it, but woods, basically.
You did a good job blending those tires in. You have to really look to.
Also, I have a woman from Fox Rothschild, the attorney that's representing the application. If y'all would like, she's got a little presentation, if you don't hear it, about the tower or...
You support her request?
I, you support it?
Meets all the standards of our ordinance.
Your application's rather complete. I have no questions, Mr. Chairman. We'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion second.
Is there any wording anywhere that this tower has to be utilized or put in service in a period of time?
The wording of our ordinance states that it has to be a working tower. And by definition, the tower is built by a company. It's there available for leaves and working condition. That's why most of the ones that are here are now turned on in the last year.
You know why I asked that question?
Because the first round that come through.
And standing for several years or utilized, and I just didn't see any language in there.
My understanding of the way the tower business works is a company, AT&amp;T, Caroline West, whoever, will put out a request for a tower, and they'll give a pin location with coordinates. And the companies will come out and bid, which their company gets it. And the company acts like Diamond Communications owns a tower. AT&amp;T requested this tower to be for that location. So now Diamond Communication builds a tower. They make it, I think this one has three spots plus the 911 part on it. One spot will be for AT&amp;T, which they are paying lease on it, so therefore, it's technically a working tower because it's, but it just don't have the 10 array on it. And this one.
Another question is, I know our ordinance talks to co-locating. I guess that process was fleshed out, and there's no other towers need to locate on.
Actually, you all changed the ordinance a few years back from, it used to state to co-locate anything within a mile. We took actually the mile out and saying that anytime co-location is possible, you must and provide documentation. And part of that packet is coverage maps showing nearby towers and the coverage without this one and the difference it makes.
911, tires up on that, too. Good thing for community, 911.
Our ordinance states that they have to provide access for us if needed, but there's a part, and I'll ask Karen to come explain that, it's through a company for actual 911 emergency services.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. My name is Karen Kemerite. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Fox Rothschild in Raleigh, and thank you for having me here today. With me is Daniel and Francis Buckle, sitting in the back area, and then David Smith, who is a North Carolina certified real estate appraiser. I have a presentation, but I think that it's probably not necessary to take the time. But I did want to respond to your question about the tower being utilized. This is not what we call a speculative or a spec tower. It was specifically planned for AT&amp;T to provide coverage in the area. And then also, it's specific for AT&amp;T and then the First Responder Network Authority, FirstNet, that provides broadband coverage for the first responders, which would be the firemen, the police, and the EMS. And this is a particularly important location for FirstNet because they are trying to have the first responder capability near the Blue Ridge Parkway. So it will be utilized from the very beginning by both AT&amp;T and FirstNet, and then there will be at least two more locations on the tower for co-location opportunities.
Should help 911, so.
Right.
You have a question?
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
All the motion.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. I vote. Thank you all.
Thank you all. A nice folder. Travis, you want these back?
Please.
Recycle. Come over, get it back.
Could have left them. You may want to stay around for this one, Travis.
Next up, Splash Pad Proposal. Egan?
Good evening. Just wanted to give you all some information. I had contacted a couple companies to actually come and look at our existing facility. If we are looking at the kiddie pool area alone, it's 14 by 28 feet, so you're looking at 392 square foot. If we look at the whole kiddie pool area that's fenced in, you're looking at 1,250 square foot. Just to kind of give a reference, Dobson Splash Pad is something that a bunch of people reference, that they say is a great facility. I actually spoke to them on the phone today just to get some information. Theirs is around 2,500 square feet. So it's a little bit bigger than the kiddie pool area that we have, and she said that their splash pad cost them about $250,000. So from what, it just depends on what you want. Starting with the first page I've kind of given you, you can go as simple as ground sprays. So they're just holes in the ground, basically sprinklers, and then you can get to the bigger things that have slides you can climb on, buckets that dump. So it's really how, however big and how much you want to spend. They can range from $65,000 to $500,000 plus. And in the time that I had, I couldn't actually get someone here to give us an exact quote based on what we have there. I was hoping that if we did something like this, it may tie into the pump that we already have at the kiddie pool. That might actually cut the cost some, but I haven't gotten anyone here. A lot of people aren't traveling due to COVID and outside of the state. And one of the people that we had talked to originally when we first thought about a splash pad is out of South Carolina, so if they come to North Carolina, they have to quarantine for two weeks. So right now, it's just hard to get somebody. But the ones in our area do not require admission either. They're actually tied into existing parks. So they turn them on 10:00 AM, some of them 8:00 AM, leave them on till 6:00 PM or 8:00 PM at night, and they have somebody shut them off. So they run all day. There's no admission. It's just, for instance, in Kraus Park. So that's just kind of the ones in our area. Kernersville is in a park. Dobson is in a park. There's one in Hickory, and it's in an existing park. So depending on where we want to go, we can spend, not cheap, but if you do the ground sprays, it's much cheaper than going with the big equipment that dumps and things like that. Basically, you start with the ground sprays, and then everything you add can be $2,000 to $50,000 for a specific piece to put in. And we have.
Your bud's quiet.
Just for reference, we have $127,604.81 left in the Beamer fund.
First question I have, what's the overall condition up there? If we start to making changes, are we going to have to go into ADA compliant? What's the line in the sand? Because we have to go ADA compliant. We're talking major money, aren't we? None of the bathroom facilities are ADA compliant.
There's not handicap stalls in others.
Overall condition of the facility is not that good from last time that I was up there.
Needs a lot of work.
Was the total daily census last summer for use?
I think on average, we had about six, six to eight people.
You just answered my question. ADA compliance, does that apply to splash pads?
The splash pads, they are ADA compliant. So if we just put the splash pad, that would not be something that we would have to change. But if we did any upgrades to the restrooms or anything like that in the facilities, then that's where we have to look at the then that's where we have to look at the ADA compliant. And I talked to Travis some about that, too. There's a couple rooms in the back near the pump room and the chemical storage room. He said that we could turn one of the storage rooms into like a family unisex restroom that we made handicap rather than renovating the bathrooms totally and making them ADA compliant. So we could put a specific location in the back hallway, Travis said, and that would be fixed for the ADA compliant.
Has there been any thought to the town being on that?
I have had some brief conversation about putting it at the Kraus Park area. And I was asked to come to the Parks and Rec meeting at the, he said, probably the end of the month, kind of just to talk and see what they could do. They said that they are interested in the idea of maybe putting it at Kraus Park, which they're redoing all their playground equipment. So it will probably be a frequented area when they finish that. So putting it there, you may get more use out of it than just the months of the pool that are open, just depending on the weather, because you can turn it on and off. And another thing that to consider, the lady from Dobson, you do have to put chemicals in it. It's not just water. You've got to balance it just like a pool. And she said the larger the tank, the easier it is to balance, because they went with the smallest tank. And she said they can check the chemicals at 2:00 PM and then at 2:15, you're having to change them because their pump is those, or the holding tank is so small that they have, because it is turnover. So that's something that you have to monitor rather than just turning a switch on and leaving for the day.
Just, would the county provide this splash, splash, splash pad for the town? Is that what they're talking about?
Well, just in brief conversation, the town had mentioned maybe partnering with us doing a splash pad, them doing the maintenance and upkeep on the splash pad. So, and that's just been with one, one member, just brief conversation and just an idea of if we were going to put one somewhere, maybe a location that it would be more frequented than just hours of Duncan Recreation.
No Dobson, theirs is one block off of Main Street beside Wells Fargo Bank?
Yes.
Man, things busy.
She said, she said it's been a great asset. She said they learned some things that you can have stained concrete or you can paint the surface. And she said she would not recommend painting the surface by any means, that they've redone it three times already. And it's about $5,000 every time that they have to repaint the surface. And so she said if you go, you put one, she would recommend the stained concrete. She was very helpful and she did say it was a huge asset because a lot of the times the parents will, their kids in there while other kids are playing on playground equipment because they are right beside of one another. So she said it has been a huge hit to their area.
Need to have a conversation with the town, see if they'd want to. I mean, that would be a talent, a draw to the town, I would think, come down the road.
And another thing, just the age that is the one thing that would, you know, it's a small age group that it caters to. It's not going to cater to nine, 10, 11-year-olds there. That's not something that's going to interest them if, unless you go with one of the bigger things that has the slides built into it and things like that. So that's just.
That million dollars you're talking about?
Not necessarily. There's some of them that are, you know, but just whatever route, I can get some more quotes. I just didn't, in the timeframe, have anybody that could get up here and actually look at our facility. And if it's something we want to talk to with the town, I could have them look at both locations and see what we could do and get some more specific numbers. But that's just me calling around to different areas and doing some online research.
Skateboard park, would concrete have to be taken up to put the spray?
You'll have to do the piping underneath, so we would have to bust up concrete.
Your thoughts?
Well, I, I know that it's, would be wonderful for the younger kids in the area with our kiddie pool not being utilized. It's, it's a lot of money for a couple of months usage is my only thing. I would love to see if we're going to be putting, you know, $200,000 into something, $300,000, looking at getting matching grants. Our kids don't have their own gem of their own. So that's where my, it, it's just, for me, I would like something that our kids can use year-round rather than just a couple of months out of the year, especially wintertime. We don't have anything that kids can do. So I would hate to use all of what's left in our Beamer Fund and not give kids anything more than, I mean, it would probably cost a few thousand dollars to get the kiddie pool back functioning. So if that's something that the kids could use, it would be. I, I've talked to Mr. Carter some today about maybe putting out a survey and seeing, you know, if our kids, if we got the kiddie pool back up and running and opened back Duncan Recreation with the slides, then would that be sufficient? Would they, would the public be pleased with that? But then again, you go back to the master plan and the number one thing that people wanted was a splash pad. So I'm kind of torn. I want to give the people what they want, but at the same time, I want something that our kids can utilize as much as possible. So, and the other thing to consider is the gallons per minute that some of these things use. And it's on the pieces of paper, different things. You range from 20 gallons per minute to 750 gallons per minute. So, and that's per thing that you're pumping out. So it's a lot of water, but it is recycled. So it's a filtration system and that goes back to the tank. So it's a lot to, a lot to consider. But I think if we talk to the town and you want me to get some more specific numbers, then I would be happy to do so.
What's consensus?
See, get some more numbers. I don't know if we can afford the kind of numbers you're talking about, but based on the size pad that's already there, that could be.
Yeah. And that's, you know, 1,200 foot is the area of the kiddie pool. And I haven't actually gone to the skate park and looked at that area to see what kind of area is there. So I wouldn't know the square footage of that. I can go look and see what, I just know that from what I talked to the lady at Dobson, theirs is around 2,500 square feet. And she said they spend about $250,000. So.
When you get the skate park, take away from use of the swimming pool?
I believe so. I believe if we put something at the skate park, then the parents that are there to, with the younger children are no longer going to utilize Duncan Rec. So we're bringing to one facility but taking away from another that's already underutilized.
How long has the, in Dobson been there?
About four years, I believe. So she said, because she, she said in the last three years, they had repainted the surface three times. So that they basically do it every, the beginning of every season.
The thought is part of grants, this could fall in line with opportunity.
Yes. And that's if we, if we are using money from, they give matching funds. So that would give the opportunity to use matching funds and get some assistance.
I'd like to hear some, hear some more numbers.
I'll get some people up here. I just was on vacation last week. So by the time that I had contacted people and a lot of people aren't traveling, but I will get some people up here and get specifics and come back and let you all know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Megan.
Next up in general business, general fund budget amendment.
Chairman, I know historically, we've kind of focused on, I think our finance director doing a lot of these, these amendment discussions. And one, one thought that I've had is, is in addition to doing what we can to keep commissioners informed, is also to provide the opportunity to the department heads who are making these requests to have that front line of communication as well. And what that does is that keeps us all in the same loop as opposed to just one or two individuals holding the keys. So I know Lisa is here tonight for your first general fund budget amendment. And if it's okay, I'd like to ask her to, to identify what she's looking for.
Even.
Bring your mic down a little bit, please. Stand up.
I tried. Um, the general fund that, question here is we received a $6,188 donation from a local church for our foster kids. So that was very unexpected and very generous. So I did talk to them about us, you know, putting that into it. We have a donations line item, but this is designated strictly for our foster kids and any needs that they may have. So that is what that is about. And then I have some other monies from last fiscal year to close out our budget. I have the monies in our budget that I needed to pay some foster care room and board that were late getting submitted and attorney fees that were late getting submitted. But I had that in the budget. I just need the approval from you all to move that money around to pay those line items and pay those bills.
I have any questions?
The last portion, is that included in this general fund amendment? If it isn't on the agenda, we can't approve it.
Donations is the only amendment I was aware of.
We can. I'll make a motion to approve for the donations. It's got to be on the agenda or else we can't vote on it.
And we can certainly do that at your next meeting.
Second the motion.
I don't think it'd be a problem.
Question and second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. I vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Transportation.
Afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm here today for three budget amendments. The first one is for transfer of funds from FY '20 into '21. This is for two minivans and one lift van that was purchased or ordered last year, but we couldn't get it. They are on their way. The second is for unspent rope funds from last fiscal year. That's our rural general public funds. And due to COVID and transportation slowing down, they're allowing us to roll it into '21. And the third is for replacement of the van that was totaled in FY '19-'20. We've had some trouble finding one. So I just wanted to move that money into this year so we could purchase a van.
Chairman, may I add a few comments?
Yes, sir.
First of all, all of these is available for consideration. The monies are there. The funding from the previous year is there. So those are, those are all able to be considered. I think you have an amended update number two, I think that maybe Drew gave you. On the original screen that I have on the, or the numbers I have on the screen at this time, under number two, on the line item 40-330-0350, you see 12,500 on the screen. That line item is actually 40-330-0300. I wanted to make sure that there was clarification on that line item. Then you also should have a, an amended number three. On the screen, it identifies an expense of 16,458 and a revenue of 16,456. That should be both numbers, 16,458, which you should have the amended number as well.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve general business items four, five and six.
Motion to hear a second.
Second.
Motion second to approve four, five and six on general business. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. I vote.
Thank you.
Next up is Hemp Hill Randell.
Chairman, I'll take that one. In your, in your package, you have a several-page agreement that I referenced at your previous board meeting. This is the agreement that Hemp Hill Randell Associates has put together for the engineering services for the old Council on Aging facility. I think if I remember correctly, the question remaining was, was if our attorney had the opportunity to see if there was anything that stood out. But it seems to be a standard AIA document, unless Donna has any questions. With that in mind, if she doesn't, I would recommend that you consider adopting this agreement so that we can get those, those individuals to work as soon as we can.
Would make a motion to accept the proposal.
Second.
Motion of a second to accept the proposal. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Five vote. Next up, discussion on fairgrounds administration.
Chairman, if I may, I have asked Tommy Calhoun since he is the old man of the fairgrounds and has all the corporate knowledge from the beginning of time on fairgrounds to attend tonight, so that if we have questions, we can ask him, sir.
Okay.
I object to him saying Tommy's that old. Don't think he's that old.
He's younger than us, but so's Dirk.
What do we need to do here, Tom?
Well, I have one question. Who's running the fairgrounds? Right now, right now, Megan gets requests for events. He schedules them, but then we have to go to the fairgrounds committee for approval of the events. This is confusing. I sat on that fairgrounds committee for three years. It's a 501(c)(3), I believe, was set up as, please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Calhoun, since I don't want me to call you Tommy, that basically it was a 501(c)(3) so that the transfer of land would, the Higgins family would be able to get the tax benefit. And then the land was transferred from the 501(c)(3) to the county. And this is where it gets a little bit blurry in the bylaws. The bylaws state that there's going to be 150 members. Bylaws state that there will be an annual meeting at the first of the year. Then we have an executive board that is set up. Now, I am totally confused because the county is now, we're paying, now I believe the appropriation this year is $9,500, paying the electric bill. We're sending county employees out there to do the maintenance on the fairgrounds. We don't, we have no control over the events that are going to be there because if the fairgrounds committee decides they don't want to have a mud sling, vote it down. There is the benefit from the county. I'd like to, I'd like to get everything, get a line drawn in the stand and see where we are going with this. Now, I understand that there's a rewrite of the bylaws. The county commissioner on there, well, ever since I've been on the board, spent three years on that, on the board out there. I voted on every vote that I attended. Now, the county commissioner is told that he is an ex officiado. He can't vote. Let's figure out who's, who's doing what and where we're going to take this thing. Is the fairgrounds committee going to run the fairgrounds? If so, let's rescind the budget. Let them run it. They, they can pay the bills. They can hire people to come in to do the maintenance. The volunteers have been out there mowing. Is the county going to run it with the advice? Is it going to be an advisory committee? These are basic questions that need to be answered.
I add one thing.
Yes, sir.
Can't remember if it was last budget year or year before that, that Karen Evans ran a cost of what it, what it costs to run the fairgrounds for a year. And I believe that figure was in the 50 to 60,000 dollar range of the actual, what the county had paid out. And I think the fairgrounds had paid, some fairgrounds group committee or whatever, was also adding to some of those funds. I thought we had allocated a little more than 10,000. I thought we had allocated a little more than ten thousand for maintenance this year, but whoever's running it, need to look at their spending. I think in excess of fifty to seventy thousand dollars, keep the fairgrounds in the shape that it's in. Right now, I think the county is, is in the largest part of that bill, and we have virtually no input on how the, how it's used. The fairgrounds committee, whether they're an advisory group or all empowered, I don't understand, I don't know. I think we're in the process of, some of the members are trying to rewrite the bylaws to bring them up to date, which is a good thing. I just wanted to add that part to it.
Chairman, if I may, Commissioner Irwin brought up the expenses, and this is a request for financial report dated October the 23rd of 2019. We received it on the 18th from Karen Evans. Water and sewer, twenty-four hundred ninety-eight dollars eighty-six cents. Propane, two thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars fifty-five cents. Electric, fifteen thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars seventy-seven cents. Telephone, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars eighty-six cents. Supplies, one thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars ninety-one cents. Maintenance and repair, twenty thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty-eight cents. Allegated cost, one thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars. Work orders, materials only, fifteen thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-four cents. We are looking at sixty thousand dollars that the county is spending out there at the fairgrounds. Whenever they have an event out there, I don't think the county's getting that much back. Now, the fairgrounds is the largest draw that we have in this county. Ever we can have a fiddler's convention, it will draw more than all the other events that occur in this county. Right now, we've just got a loose coalition. Nobody knows who, who's, who's doing what. We know who's doing the maintenance, we know who's paying the bills. Now, the fairgrounds also has funds on their own, and they have contributed, they bought a mower, they bought a tractor. We have things out there that I don't think anybody knows who the ownership is. This is a big question mark. The citizens of this county are wondering where's the money going? I can show you sixty thousand dollars right here.
Where was it?
Two thousand nineteen.
Last year.
October of two thousand and nineteen.
When they added on the.
We did.
The restrooms and stuff like that.
Redid the restrooms.
This year is a total different number.
Yep, it, well, it will be, but the latest numbers that we've got.
Well, it's just throw it out there straight up. I mean, this year, there's not been any maintenance, there's been any maintenance, not to my knowledge.
We extended the track.
Jay's day. They've had volunteers mowing just to try to save money there, out there, and they've got their board of directors and organization out there. This board right here gets the final say-so of any monies being spent out out there.
Really?
I think.
Not on their funds?
When you, not on their funds, that's their funds. We can't control what they've donated to them.
Okay.
I don't think, but anyway.
Well, county manager, have you got the maintenance personnel to keep on doing the maintenance?
Been very fortunate this year. Not been a lot of maintenance to do. To accurately answer that with the staffing and the restrictions that we've got in staffing right now, I'll just, I'll just respond by saying we've been very fortunate, the situation we're in.
A return on the county, how much is, how much do you figure the county made or money that we actually brought in last year? Less than ten thousand dollars? Okay, now that wasn't set up by the fairgrounds committee though, was it? Did they approve that?
Yeah, but.
Get a cut?
No.
So, here we are, the county scheduling events, taking the money in, other events, the fairgrounds committee's taking the money in.
Chairman, what's the county's obligation and what's their rights?
I haven't read the bylaws for the fairgrounds in ages. I remember looking at a draft that Jim Brown had sent me sometime last year, and I remember making comments on that, but I know that never passed. I had asked for him to give me a copy of the current bylaws, and I never got those. I'm not in a position to answer that question tonight.
I think it would be a good, Bobby.
Reviewing the current bylaws now, I think we've had two meetings to discuss some suggestions as to redoing the bylaws. One thing that concerns me, I think that should concern all the taxpayers, is the disillusionment of the, of the fairgrounds committee if they fold it for some reason. There is a clause in there that whatever the fairgrounds committee says they own, that can be given or sold virtually to anybody, and the money doesn't necessarily come back to the county. That concerns me to a very large extent. Inventory of what the fairgrounds owns, the inventory of what the county owns, nobody at this point has been able to tell me who owns this and who owns that. So I have no idea what would be sold.
Yes, the question comes down, Mr. Chairman, is the fairgrounds committee going to be an advisory committee or are they going to be a operational committee?
We're asking a lot of questions we don't have an answer to myself. I mean, I think it'd be a.
That's why it's a discussion, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Chairman.
I understand that, but I think it'd be a good idea to, for you to write the questions down and people time to look up answers to, Mr. Carter.
Just wanted to make a comment. Commissioner Bobby Irwin and I, we, we took a ride around a week or so ago looking at different facilities, and there are a number of facilities, not only the fairgrounds, but a number of facilities that have questions that revolve around who owns what and what agency and, and what happens and who, who's authorized to disperse of this stuff and so what. But what I had indicated, I've already spoke with, with three or four different ones that are involved in these different groups, and we're going to make August a month in which we try to determine who owns what in each of these facilities so that we can identify that information and then take the proper steps to either dispose of or storage or, or whatever we need to do. But that's, that's what August is going to be dedicated to.
We went through this exercise with the previous county manager where there was a memorandum of understanding, which was basically the county was going to take over the operation. I never saw the, the MOU, but from the gist of the comments that I received, that was what they felt was going to happen. This is a gray area, and gray area in government is not a good area to have, in my opinion.
Did that MOU actually get executed?
No, it did not.
I didn't think it did.
Chairman, if I may, I, I think that Mr. Carter is aware of, of this problem, but also of other problems about ownership. I would like to, to give him whatever time he needs to come up with the plan and let him make a recommendation as to how this facility should be looked at, how it should be run in hi, in his opinion, especially the inventory and who makes the final decision on the maintenance, when it's done, who does it, who pays for it. I would just, I'd like to hear from him and, and give him enough time to come up with, with a plan.
I don't have a problem with that, but I don't see any difference in the way the facility's been run today versus last year and the year before that. Really. Anybody wants to say anything? I mean, it's a.
It's not the question of how it was run last year, year before that, it's how it's going to be run in the future.
Well, we're throwing out last year's sixty thousand dollar upkeep.
You think that the electric bill's going to go down in the future? Do you think the propane will go down in the future?
Oh, I don't, but we, hopefully we'll get some, some organizations back in there having, having, the, the fairgrounds committee really pushes that thing, and we all do that, all the commissioners to have events out there, but we can't do nothing about COVID right now.
I, I understand that, and this is why it's a golden opportunity that we put it on the table and started looking at it, cussing it and discussing it so that in the future, we've got some clear guidelines.
Good to let Mr. Carter study that and come back to us and.
Along with Donna about what leeway we can do. Like to see the bylaws, I'd like to see the, the Form 990 has been filed yearly. It's a EX because they have less than fifty thousand dollars of income. I'd like to see the minutes of the annual meetings for the last four years where they elected officers. Fair Corporation, they have guidelines that they have to go by. Let's see if they've been maintaining them.
With that information and what Mr. Carter could come up with would answer a lot of, lot of questions for the board members and for the county.
We're all good now, we need a motion on that.
Motion, well, it was just a discussion, I believe. I don't think we need a decision on that, Mr. Chairman.
First you, check on that for us and Donna.
To do this gets lengthier.
Got a big notebook.
Okay, next BDC contract discussion.
Commissioner. Reason why I wanted to put the BDC contract on the docket, Mr. Chairman. There's a lot of questions that's come up in my mind about the BDC. Last commissioners meeting, I asked some questions. We have a military-grade fiber optic system that is in that building. Actually, it's not in the building. It is, goes through the building, but there is a, I believe it's eighty by one hundred foot head that contains that military-grade fiber optic. That was put in by MCNC Golden Leaf as the broadband initiative. Apparently, whenever we started out with the BDC, it was going to be a telemarketing center. And with the Golden Leaf, they put into broadband. Now, that building, we own the land, whenever I say we, the citizens of Allegheny County own the land, but the lease for that building is from Wilkes Community College. They're paying for the building. There's income. I don't see it reflected. And the whole operation, whenever we look at the contract, management of the facility, this is the operational management agreement signed the second of October, 2018. Marketing and business startup, consultative services, training and public education programs, support and promotion of economic development and business activity within Allegheny County. Has it been happening? Well, to me, that voids the contract. Here again, this was formed by setting up a 501(c)(3). Member of the county and the town, since the town does contribute to the operation of that facility, were placed on the board. As a 501(c)(3), and your honor, please correct me if I'm wrong, 501(c)(3) is what is considered a legal entity, if I remember my old business law professor fifty-two years ago. It's a legal entity.
Well, a nonprofit corporation is a legal entity. A 501(c)(3) is just a tax status.
Yeah, tax, but we've set up a corporation, we have bylaws.
It is a corporation.
Yeah. So now, we've lost control of a piece of property. They run it. They're receiving funds, they're renting out the spaces. We found out during the discussion last week, I believe, the week before, that they have tenants that have been in there for six years. Supposed to be an incubator for business. We've got tenants that have been in there for six years, and they're still paying a hundred and fifty dollars a rent, and that includes everything but telephone. Now, I think this is an opportunity where the county needs to take control of the property because the terms of the contract have not been fulfilled. Granted, we're going to have to hire somebody at a position to manage that facility, but we now have a new economic develop, economic and tourist development company, corporation that's coming in so that they're going to do the economic development. At the least, we need to rewrite the contract and take this out.
Any further, anybody got any questions?
Do, you, what was your comment about Wilkes Community College?
Wilkes Community College leased that, the land, the building that the, the MCNC fiber optic is in, and now they have, there's a number of companies that are in there going into that facility.
So that's the building only adjacent.
That is the building right over as we're looking behind the new welding center.
Not the BDC building.
No, not the BDC building. They, it's the block building there with the generator.
Tell you how I feel about all this, we do have a newly organized, organizing Allegheny Chamber for Economic Development and Tourism that will be, I think, picking up a, a lot of the areas that is in this contract, but at this time, I think they need time to develop out their plan and communicate with our director at the BDC and, and maybe with our manager and that they all sit down and see what makes sense and come back with a proposal of a different contract if they, to that point. Till then, I'm, I'm not going to want to run things for them.
Here again.
I'd like for them to.
Current budget.
Work through that.
Here again, current budget, we're putting nine thousand five hundred dollars into the BDC. Wilkes Community College has that large portion of the building. We ripped up our brand-new paved parking lot for a two-inch drainpipe, but they don't even have a bathroom in that building, I understand. So, we need to get a handle on this somewhere. Of course, with a corporation, they can act as they want, they don't have to advise us, we've basically signed over control to them.
So, it was consensus is to give the newly formed time to.
I mean, that's me, I, anybody else wants to do it?
Agrees. Can you negotiate the contract?
Negotiate or. See what they need to do. Go to you, Bobby.
Yes.
Don't need a motion on that, this is just discussion.
Do you know when they'll finalize?
I don't, I mean, I think they would need to communicate themselves and come back with a proposal.
One, two months.
I'm not going to set a timeline, I don't know where they are. I mean, I don't know. I don't know how they're prog, I don't know how the new organization's progressing, I think they've got a, a lot of work to do before they would know and, and then be able to, I mean, I think we'd ask them that question.
Okay. Moving on down to county managers' comments.
Chairman, members of the board, I have, I have a few comments outside of the one identified, the one identified on your agenda, I mentioned, believe, earlier at another meeting, as, as we're all aware, Ms. Karen Evans has retired, and her last day was Friday. So, I hope each of you had an opportunity to see her beforehand and wish her well. There, there is a statute that identifies that a, that a county will appoint a finance director, and even though we have a retirement. And even though we have a retirement upon us and we will be in the process of seeking the next finance director, there is no excuse for that. The finance director, even on an interim basis, has to be made available, and that person specifically is... That's what allows the county to issue checks and to do the appropriate things associated with that position. So, Karen left on Friday. We've had some discussion amongst... I indicated I would have a recommendation for an interim finance officer, and since that retirement went through, I have that. And I am identifying Ms. April Hamm as the interim finance director. Now, I've spoken with April. April has experience in the finance office. Many of you probably know she was in that office for some time. So, while we are on the search for the replacement and to stay compliant, I'd like to make Ms. April Hamm our interim finance director until we find a suitable candidate to fill that position. Now, as I read the statute, it allows the Board of Commissioners or their designee, which I'm going to, I think we've had this conversation, that tell me different, I'll certainly understand, but right now, I'm acting as your designee, and I am saying that Ms. April Hamm, effective August 1, because we can't have a lapse in time, on Saturday, she became your interim finance director. Be happy to answer any questions you might have about that. Okay. The other items, I've given you building updates for some time now, so I'm going to continue that trend. And we'll start off with the Council on Aging Building. For several meetings, I've been saying July 31st. Now, we were done on July 31st. We got a little punch list we got to go back fix. And they're not major things. We've got a couple pieces of trim, and these are all either through health department's walkthrough inspection or our own occupancy, CO. So, a couple pieces of trim in the office. We've got to put in the stalls for the bathrooms. They're there. We've got to put the ice maker in, and while that hadn't been done, is they still had to operate out of the office facility, so they couldn't move it until they got the official CO. We've got a self-closer on a door. We discovered we've got to have a dumpster pad. We've got to pour a little concrete so that we're compliant with that. We've got to do a little caulking, and believe it or not, we've got to paint the bathrooms and kitchen with high gloss paint. Paint that was on there is not sufficient. So, the paint has been taken care of, and we'll get that done, but I hate to say that I wasn't right, and you won't hear me say that a lot, at least in Pride, but we didn't get done on July 31st. But that should be taken care of this week. Soon. I guess I'll put it that way, soon. Now, what I'll say along with that is what everybody likes to hear. The date, we spent $352,855 on that facility. I will remind you that it was budgeted at $250,000, to put it in perspective. That's your new Council on Aging report. Old Council on Aging Building. Commissioner Bobby and John Irwin is on the courthouse committee, so we met Friday of last week with the, with two judges, Judge Doubt and Judge Duncan. We also had the sheriff, and we had Susie Gamble, and we just had a good get-together talk. Drew was there. And what I did was I had been in communication now for a couple of weeks with Frank Randell, and I tried to incorporate the judges' thoughts and the sheriff's thoughts and all the players, trying to incorporate a working plan for that new, or that old Council on Aging facility. So, in working with Frank, we got a design together. I took it before this group, presented it. I'll certainly allow both Commissioner Irwin's to comment, but I felt like it was a good working session. I think that we got good communication. The suggested changes that the judges and the sheriff and clerk had were minor, what I consider to be minor. There were no structural, there were no... I mean, it was just minor in design. I have already forwarded those comments to our now contracted engineer. He indicated that he would have me a revision sometime later this week, which, once I receive that, I'll get it out to everyone. I don't want to worry you out with different plans. I want to give you the final one. I come from a school that, basically, I don't worry so much about the labor. I just want the baby. So, that's what I'm trying to do, is not worry out the labor. I want to give you the baby. And make sure, once again, that everybody is good, judges included, and then turn it loose. And I think it was well received. I think that I am safe to say that the judges are appreciative of what we're trying to do. At the same time, they are very aware of the timeframe in which this whole process has been going on, and I can only smile because I can't account much of that. But Commissioners, I'll let you all, if you have any comments.
The only comment I have that, I agree with everything you said, and one of the last things that one of the judges mentioned was, this has been going on seven years, and they were fed up with that process taking so long. And I think with the timeline that you laid out that Hemp Hill had, we're looking at early 2021, the first, end of the first quarter, something in that range, unless something terrible happens, be finished. But they're also, let us know that there's still a strong possibility we'll have to go to the Higgins Center to hold court in October, I believe it was, for estimated four to six weeks. But overall, I think, like you said, they were very pleased with what we were trying to do, but they also ended the meeting with seven years.
Any questions?
Very well covered.
And as I go through, I'll identify, as we're talking finance packages, the old COA, the conversion into the courtroom, was estimated at $170,000. There's $155,863 remaining in that line. It is with barely a large amount of confidence for me to say that it's not going to cover it. So, as we continue to work through these pieces of the puzzle, I'll be coming back to you with some ideas on how we're going to cover the difference. Putting that out there. Mr. Bobby Irwin mentioned the black building. I just wanted to mention that after the meeting on Friday, Susie Gamble took Judge Duncan down. They reviewed it, looked at it. I have not heard if it can be good or bad. I did not hear any comments, but I think the indicator that I took back from that portion of the meeting was that although it's still up in the air whether or not that October court date will happen, that they basically identified that we should prepare for it. So, what that tells me is in the next week or so, I'll get back with the sheriff. We'll do a, basically, a punch list of what type of improvements that we need to make to that facility, and we'll begin that process to be ready in case that does happen. The last facility I want to mention is the courthouse. Can't forget what we've got. So, HDH is, they're almost complete with their analysis. The day building inspection was really helpful. They provided me with electronic prints of the renovation of the courthouse, which I've now forwarded to HDH so that they can put their findings into the structural components of the roof and the existing walls. They indicate that they'll hopefully get me something by the end of the week, so if that's the case, we'll be able to talk a little bit more about that. Couple suggestions that I, we have one large dehumidifier in the lower level of the courthouse that is operational. Our recommendation is we need to purchase a couple smaller units and put them in a couple different areas within the courthouse. We are going to have a rainy week, so let's not add to the problem. Let's try to help the problem out. I had mentioned at the last meeting that HDH was going to have a contractor come down just to provide an estimate on some of the concern areas. That didn't happen because of some things that went on, but they're going to try to rearrange that for this week. So, what I'm getting at is hopefully by your next meeting, I'll be able to put this thing together and really have some numbers and really have some thoughts to tie this whole thing together with. So, a lot of work going on, a lot of components in play, but thus far, I'm pleased with how we've got some groups handling these things. And it's my comments.
Progress? Moving on down. Commissioner comments?
At the last Commissioners' meeting, I brought up a question in regards to the Allegheny County Economic Development Corporation showing $1,354,830 asset on the Form 990, which, for those that aren't familiar, that's basically the income tax form for a nonprofit. Started doing a little bit of digging, and I think it would be worthwhile to give you a little bit of background. Apparently, whenever Magnolia was interested in coming to this area, the county went out, looked for grants, any kind of money that we could for economic development, and to do that, they formed a 501(c)(3). 501(c)(3) then arranged grants and made the arrangements to purchase the land that Magnolia is on at this time, cleared the land, built the building, and then transferred the building to them with a revision. Now, the funny thing about this, and this is why I'm looking at 501(c)(3)'s in the county. This 501(c)(3) was formed in 1998. Looking at 2017's Form 990, they're showing $1.3 million asset, which is the building for Magnolia. Whenever I say it was funny, because March of 1998, they transferred the building to Magnolia with a revision clause. The revision clause was taken away October 3, I believe, October of 1998. Magnolia owns the building, free and clear, but the Allegheny County Economic Development Corporation is still showing it as an asset. Now, the county manager and I were visited. That gentleman that took issue with the figures, he's still showing the same figures with an asset, so that needs to come off. Also, during the conversation that the county manager and I had over in the BDC, it was mentioned that they had only had two meetings in the last six years. North Carolina Statute 55-07-01 requires an annual meeting for the election of officers. Now, this county has a history, and I look back on it. Seemed to form a 501(c)(3), turn everything over to these people, and boom, we put a county manager and town manager on, then we forget about it. Let them run it. Let them run it. Even though the property may be owned by the county, that is it. So, we lose control. We look, we lose lack of oversight whenever we do this. Now, whether we're going to do it in the future or not, right now, we are dealing with what we have in this. We have an asset in the BDC. We've just been told by the county manager that we spent $350,000 plus for a new Council on Aging. If we'd have controlled the BDC, we could have built, we could have had a place for the Council on Aging. I don't think it would have cost us that much. We need a expansion on our dispatch. If we want to go into the BDC, we have to go and ask, may I, to the corporation that's running it right now under the current contract? This is an area that we need to look at. It's one of those things, it's one of those SLDs, the small, smelly, little details that you have to deal with with government. They can have large consequences. Mr. Chairman, I thank you for your time. God bless the United States.
Thank you, sir.
In the board meeting today of DSS, I'd announce we had 52 kids in foster care last year. We ended up with 43, so they were very successful in getting kids adopted. Hopefully, that will continue, so that's a great thing. That's all.
Commissioner Bobby?
I would just like to introduce my grandson, Pierce Irwin. Stand up just a minute. Any farmers that need some free labor, Pierce is there, but you have to feed him. That's the only problem. I do appreciate Pierce being here, and I'm glad he came tonight to see how county government operates. He can take that back to his school, maybe get one credit or something for it, but I would like to say hello to Pierce. Thank you.
Just make sure he gives you a big bonus before you go home.
Pierce is showing you off because you're part of the good-looking Irwins.
Mr. Irwin Evans?
I would like to just say a heartfelt, bittersweet goodbye to Karen Evans, a lot of time and a lot of years into this county, and just thankful and wish her well in her future.
I echo that, too. Karen's been here 20-some years and certainly appreciate all the hard work that she's done. All the farmers out there, the harvest, she's been here 22 years, okay? Long time. To all the farmers out there that are starting into the harvest and the COVID situation, we all know, and being a farmer, lots of times, you're working very close to people, but ask all farmers to try to get the mask and get their people to wear them and really try to take precautions and keep a lid on the COVID-19 as best we can. I mean, we all know crops has got to go in, but we've got a double-edged problem this time, and it's a tough one. I'd like to mention maybe a consensus in the comments section for having a workshop on the Quarter Cent sales tax to get things lined up advertisement-wise, come up with some good schemes to put the word out, and daytime workshop, would that work for everybody?
I'll help any way I can. I'm available if I can.
The Quarter Cent?
Quarter Cent.
I think that we need to do whatever it takes, and the general public needs to understand that this may be one step that will help Commissioners to have to not raise taxes for everybody in the county by letting a lot of people from out of the county pay for that. But with the economic situation we're in, I'd look for possibly another ad valorem tax next year, and this would help keep that tax lower. That's just my opinion.
Let's set a date right quick in early morning or... I don't know what you're...
Just think we need a good game plan and get some things worked up and really try to promote this.
The only thing I would ask is at least give me 30 minutes in case there's a fire I got to put out before the meeting.
I know you can be good. Kind of date. Pretty flexible right now.
The 20th and 21st is out for me. That's the only date in August that I'm committed to.
Your thoughts, Mark?
Flexible, I may be out of pocket for a few days. Part of this week.
Day are you looking at?
It doesn't matter. Bobby's out.
I'm on 20th and 21st.
20th and 21st. About, what about the 12th on Wednesday?
The 12th, I am showing. I have a Council on Aging meeting on the 12th, but.
That's in the morning, isn't it?
Yes.
About the 11th?
11th, I've got a doctor's appointment in Greensboro and.
Good, John?
Afternoon of the 12th should be good.
1:00?
1,300 it is.
Drew will send us some notes.
Yes, please.
Won't be on by there.
Okay. You have anything else?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you all. Appreciate everybody.